All right.
Not yet.
Ooh, and Ben's here. All right, thank you. So we do have a call this evening moving to public participation. The first one is the swearing in ceremony for Ben Brzaska as trustee by the Honorable Judge Crenz. Tonight, as village president, I have the honor of welcoming our newest trustee to the village board. This is always exciting for me, as this group of individuals surrounds me, puts a lot of dedication, hard work, time, and energy into making this village what it is. So I've had the privilege of seeing so many come and go during my tenure here, and no one has left without making an impact, and I'm sure Ben will be the same. Just a minute, we'll invite the Honorable Stephen Crenz of Kendall County to swear Ben in to serve the remaining term held by trustee Betzinger. Bennett's wife, Linda, moved to the village in 2004 in a home they built. For the last two decades, we've had the privilege of watching him serve in a variety of volunteer capacities within our community, including but not limited to the Rotary Club of Montgomery, the Montgomery Citizens Police Academy, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Beautification Committee, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Montgomery Foundation. And if you're keeping track at home, that's just about everything that you can do to be involved in this community. So nobody questioned for a second his dedication to our success. So with that, congratulations, Ben. We're very excited to have you join the village board. With that, ask the judge to come up and swear in. Yeah, probably over there. She's pointing over there.
Sure.
That's why we need a clerk and a deputy clerk here. There's like a green, isn't it like a green commission card you have to sign? Appreciate it. We'll move on to the second item, which is recognition of Tom Betzinger. We asked Tom to join us this evening. Tom leaves incredibly large shoes to fill at this board. His integrity, knowledge of government, loyalty to the village have contributed significantly to many large projects and improvements over the years. Tom began his service in our village, in our village plan commission back in 2015 and joined the board as a trustee in 2019. Tonight, we'll present Tom with a small token of appreciation, which is truly small relative to the impact he's made in this community, and I'm not, that's not a platitude or an overstatement for sure. We're thankful that we'll continue to work you, work with you in your new role as Executive Director of the Oswego Land Park District. So I'll read the plaque tonight, and then if you want to come down, we'll take some photos. The plaque here says, "With our greatest appreciation, we honor trustee Thomas K. Betzinger in honor of your years of dedicated service and commitment to the village of Montgomery, 2015 to 2019 as Plan Commissioner and 2019 to 2023 as village trustee." So come on up. Move on to item C is recognition of service to Patrick Kelsey. Patrick Kelsey was on our plan commission after serving for 14 years, has decided to step down and, and maybe enjoy a little more free time on his first Tuesday of the month in the evening. We talk about how development and growth in our village works and is done successfully. Much of the credit goes to our Planning and Zoning Commission. These men and women do a lot of the advanced work and review of future developments within our village. They ask the hard questions and vet these projects before they even make it to this village board for consideration. Pat's career in civil engineering and extensive knowledge of land development, ecological restoration and compliance has been invaluable to our Planning and Zoning Commission. So now it's with our greatest appreciation that we honor Commissioner Patrick Kelsey this evening for his service dedication to the village of Montgomery, 2012 to 2024 on our planning and zoning commission. Thank you. Gretchen gave many years donating her time to the village of Montgomery. Last year, her and her husband made the decision to no longer just be snowbirds and to relocate permanently from Montgomery, so she is stepping down or has stepped down from her duties. Her knowledge and kindness and service will be greatly missed, and I would like to ask Director Apt to, to read the proclamation, introduce it this evening for the record.
Yes, so we have a recognition of service for Gretchen Countryman. And it says, "Whereas Gretchen Countryman began volunteering at the village hall in 2009 shortly after she and her husband first moved to Montgomery, and whereas Gretchen initially focused her volunteer time on Montgomery's historic preservation projects, where she assumed responsibility for cataloging hundreds of historical photos and other items donated to the archives, and whereas she recorded interviews with many of the village's older residents and business owners, of which we are fortunate to have their oral histories documented, and whereas Gretchen was also an active participant in the senior lunch program at the village hall since 2009, and whereas in 2011 Gretchen initiated a monthly senior event at village hall called Dime Jingle, a card game she had learned during her winters in Florida, and whereas she successfully grew the event from a small core group to a popular event welcoming close to 40 seniors each month, some of whom came from miles away to play more than a decade after its inception, and whereas Gretchen was appointed to our Historic Preservation Commission in 2014 and continued to serve as a tour guide for the Settlers Cottage Museum and helped with events and fundraisers including the annual cemetery walk and the Montgomery Fest car show, raising money for the HPC and its mission, and whereas Gretchen's welcoming of new residents and visitors to programs has greatly impacted the village activities in which she was involved, she truly encompasses the selfless qualities of a great volunteer, and whereas Gretchen has proven herself to be a willing and cheerful community member who brings extraordinary enthusiasm to everything she does and goes above and beyond for the village of Montgomery, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of Gretchen Countryman, we now hereby thank Gretchen Countryman for her many years of devoted community service to the village and extend our best wishes now that she and her husband have decided to permanently retire to Florida. Since they have moved to Florida, they are unable to attend tonight. However, we will be sending her this signed copy for, for her down to their home in Florida.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, I'll move on to the last item for, for public participation is the Engineers' Week proclamation. I'll read the proclamation and then enter that into the record. So Engineers Week, February 18th to the 24th, 2024. Whereas engineers have used their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to improve society's quality of life, and whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time from assuring the availability of safe, clean, efficient sources of drinking water, designing critical infrastructure, rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters, cleaning up the environment, and designing information systems that will speed our country into the future. And whereas engineering has been called the invisible or stealth profession because everything around us and things we use every day have been engineered in some way, yet we may not see the engineers behind the scenes or know much about engineering. And whereas National Engineers Week is dedicated to ensuring a diverse and well-educated future engineering workforce by creating understanding of and interest in engineering and technology careers. And whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize their practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the 21st century. Now therefore, as village president of the village of Montgomery, on behalf of its citizens and village officials, I do hereby proclaim the week of February 18th to the 24th, 2024 to be National Engineers Week in the village of Montgomery. At this time, I would like to ask our two resident village engineers to come join, take a picture. Is there any member of the public that's here tonight that wants to address the board on any topic? That's not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on. I'll read the consent agenda and entertain a motion for approval. First, we have the minutes of the January 22nd Special Village Board Meeting, minutes of the January 22nd Village Board Meeting, accounts payable through February 12th, accounts receivable report for January of 2024, the Community Development Annual Report for 2023, the Community Development Monthly Report for January of 2024, water production report for January of 2024, and lastly is ordinance 2063 calling for the closing of the railroad crossing located on Light Road, milepost 42.38, and approving a highway rail grade crossing closure agreement. Second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
May carry six zero, thank you. All right, rolling into items for separate action, the first one is Resolution 2024-003, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement, lease agreement with the Oswego Land Park District for the former Public Works Building located at 891 Nell Road. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. So in fall of 2023, the village of Montgomery Public Works Department and administration was approached by Oswego Land Park District inquiring about utilizing the former Public Works Building at 891 Nell for the duration of 18 months while they're demolishing and reconstructing a new facility that will house their administration and operation needs. So the village has been working collaboratively with the Oswego Land Park District to formulate this agreement as well as Attorney Julian, and has come forth with the board tonight with this IGA asking for approval to move forward for this service to be shared to Oswego Land Park District as they venture into their new facility. If there are any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them, and I do have one clarification. On the cover sheet, it does state an annual increase of 3.5%, and in the agreement, it was stated 4%, so that in the agreement, it needs to be remedied to 3.5%. So just wanted to call that out to the board.
Any questions?
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
And trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the second item is ordinance 2064, amending the village code section 3-90 grant a Class T liquor license to Cooper's Hawk at 998 U.S. Route 30. This is waiver of first passage on second. Director Apt.
Thank you. So back in June of 2023, the board adopted ordinance 2022, which did create this new Class T liquor license, which is tailored kind of specifically to the Cooper's Hawk model. It will allow for wine tastings, retail sale of wine in original packages, and the retail sale of alcohol beverages for consumption on the premises within a restaurant. At that time, you said, we were okay to issue that license, so we're coming before you to create that liquor license class so that they bring that total up to one. They are in the process of getting their liquor license application approved with background checks, and once that's all completed, we'll be able to actually issue the license for them.
Questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll.
Mr. Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
May carry six zero, thank you. All right, rolling into item C is recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission on PSC 2023-020, special use for outdoor storage and variances. This is Illinois Industrial Lumber at 1230 South Lake Street. Director Apt.
Yes, so Illinois Industrial Lumber is requesting a special use as well as variances to both bring their property into conformance in order for them to be able to expand their outdoor storage area. So they're looking to build a tall shed for lumber storage in the front yard and extend the outdoor storage area up to meet up with that shed along Lake Street. But there is also several variances that are necessary in order for them to do that, not only for the shed itself, but also for sort of the existing conditions that are out there on the site regarding fencing and landscaping, et cetera. So with the adoption of this ordinance, that will bring everything into conformance on the site, and they will be able to move forward with the building permit. The Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on February 1st and did recommend approval, six zero for the special use and variations, with two conditions, approval of the final engineering and fire district approval. And the petitioner is here to answer any questions if you do have any.
Excellent. Director Apt, I have a question.
Yes.
I was at that meeting and I can't remember now correctly, the shed they're going to build is going to be the same height as the other buildings there. Yes?
Basically, yes. So it'll be about 20 feet tall.
Right, okay, because that would be taller than what we would be allowing normally, correct?
Right, so our maximum height is 15 feet, so this would be five feet for accessory structures, so this would allow it to go up to 20 feet.
Okay, but it's just going to look similar to the other building it's missing. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve the recommendation of the Plan Commission. Okay, motion second by Marasek. And this is the recommendation, this is item C. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
May carry six zero. The second ordinance is the enacting ordinance, 2065, granting a special use in variances. This is the first reading. Any objection to putting that on consent at future meeting?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on to item E, ordinance 2066, authorizing the acquisition of real property. This is waiver of first passage on second. Attorney Julian.
Okay, yes, thank you. If the board will recall, this is a follow-up item back from October 2023 when we approved an MOU for the acquisition of a 1.5 acre parcel via special warranty deed to be used for a future well site. This was due to an expiring annexation agreement, however, the parties needed a little bit more time to do due diligence on the site. We now have received a copy of the deed, so we would ask for the board's acceptance of this property, subject to attorney review of just a final couple of closing documents that we still need to tidy up.
So moved. Subject to attorney review.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Roll.
Sure. Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
May carry six zero, thank you. All right, the last item for separate action is item F, Resolution 2024-002, amending an agreement with Stewart Spreading for water treatment residuals removal and disposal due to the change in Illinois law. And this is, go ahead.
Thank you, President Brawley. So the village of Montgomery owns and operates a water treatment plant facility at 891 Nell Road, which uses a method of lime softening in the treatment process. With this process, there is a byproduct that's produced, which is used, which is needed to be disposed of. In November, on November 14th of 2022, the village board approved a contract with Stewart Spreading. However, in 2023, the state of Illinois adopted changes to the prevailing wage act that specifically impacts the transportation of the materials identified in this contract. Due to the satisfactory work performed by Stewart Spreading and the fact that they are performing pursuant to an existing agreement, staff is recommending waiving any bid that may be required by this change and to authorize an amendment to the existing contract to reflect the changes in law and accordingly update the impacted unit pricing. So if there's any questions from the village board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I do have one question. The budget amount, $55,000, what does that represent?
So last year, we did some research on the totals that we were hauling away, and we actually reduced our total budget. So we still feel that we're, based upon what we've put out annually, as far as our lime removal, that that's adequate for even reflecting these changes moving forward.
Okay, so that's not the amount of the increase due to the change in the law?
No.
Do you know what the amount of the increase is going to be?
It was in the bid packet, or the board packet, I believe. I don't have that number right in front of me.
5786 is the number.
Yeah, I think it was 40.
Yeah, so it was, so that's between 4822 and 5786 at 2,000 dry tons. So that's about $19,000.
Right around 17%.
17%.
Wow.
I have a question. As we, as we move into Lake Michigan water, does this process need to continue?
No. So this process will be eliminated once we switch to Lake Michigan water. We'll be decommissioning this plan as well as our two ion exchange plans.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
May carry six zero, thank you. All right, rolling into our items for discussion this evening, we have three of them. The first one is a liquor license request for influence event suite at 285 Montgomery Road. Director Apt.
Yes, so the owner is going to be opening at 285 Montgomery Road and is requesting consideration of a liquor license for their event venue. They're requesting a liquor license that would allow their clients to bring their own alcoholic beverages for their events. At this time, the village does not have a license that would allow for that sort of BYOB situation. Therefore, a new liquor license class would need to be created for this type of liquor license. They've provided a brief letter kind of explaining their business model for the board and are here to answer any questions that you have.
Awesome. Welcome. Come on, go ahead, come down. Good evening.
I am Sharon Param, and I will, this is my husband, Wendell Param, and as she explained, we are looking to open, opening an event space at the 285 Montgomery Road. So where my situation is a little bit unique is simply just because private events don't necessarily need a liquor license, but in the event someone wants to have an event where they're actually selling tickets is where I'm more concerned with obtaining a license for that.
I have a question, Ms. Param.
Yes.
Sorry. I was under the impression from the letter, is, do you have another space like this somewhere else?
I do not.
No, this, this is your first one?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I, I think in, in the past, we've talked about creating a liquor license of this type in the past, haven't we?
I think we talked about it during the pandemic. We did have discussion about this, and obviously we didn't move forward with it at that time.
My, I guess my only question for you guys, and I guess for everybody, is that if I'm, I'm a customer and I, I bring my own alcohol, is there first a limit to the type of alcohol I can bring? But then also, if I'm at your event and I say I bring 12 bottles of wine and I have three quarters of a bottle left over, how is that, is that given back to me? Or how is that transferred in the vehicle? Because if PD pulls someone over and they've got three quarters of a bottle of wine in their vehicle, then it's probably an issue, right? So I guess those are my questions.
In this scenario, you drank 11 and three quarters bottles of wine, so I would hope that it would be. You're not driving?
I had a lot of friends.
I would say first and foremost, it's going to be up to this board to decide what would be allowed and what would not be allowed, because it would be a new liquor license class for you. So if you only wanted to allow beer and wine, you could have the license written that it only allowed for beer and wine. If you wanted to allow liquor, you could write it to allow liquor. I don't think in any case, other than specifically with like growlers, do they typically allow you to cap something and bring it home that has already been opened? So if that's something we wanted to allow, I think we would have to look into that a little further, but generally, I don't think that is, that is permitted. You know, like we can go to a brewery and you can have a growler filled up at that brewery for you to be able to take home and consume, but you can't like drink half the growler or close it up and come home. So I don't know that state statutorily wise that there's the ability to do that. So that would be something that would have to be left at the venue or dumped out. They would not be able to transport it home.
Yeah, and my recollection last time too with regard to service was that you still had somebody pouring it who was Bassett certified, so you're not just having somebody bring it in their purse, you know, putting it on the table and self-serving, that there's still, you know, waitstaff or somebody is serving that typically.
That's my business.
That was going to be mine.
Right, so there is a bartender there that is serving, that is carding and is cutting anybody off even though you're not selling it.
Correct, not selling, but a licensed bartender would have to be on the premises to be, for the customer to be able to do that.
Okay. So, so the user, I would rent the space for the retirement party, figure out the amount of product that's coming in, and then there's a line item for a bartender higher as well as part of the reservation?
Correct, so yes, if they're, if they're coming in for the, if you want to come into the influence to have your retirement party, but you don't like you old enough to retire yet, so that'd be some years down the road, but if you were to come in and have that retirement party, yes, you would just contact us, you're renting the space from us, we're just, we're the owner of the space, so to speak, and yes, you would have to, there are certain things with packages and so on, if you need to, if you want to have a liquor, you do again have to have a licensed bartender and, and security. That's definitely part of, part of my plan. You definitely have to have security.
And you may know this, you may know this. So who or where does the insurance come in and liability come in for those being served? Is that something that falls under?
Well, obviously, I, as a event space owner, have insurance, but I'm also requiring that you, if you're renting my space, and if you're having liquor, you have to purchase an event insurance for the day.
So your own individual dram shop insurance for the day?
I'm sorry.
Like a dram shop insurance?
No, it's actually called an event, event insurance policy for the day.
Got it.
Yes, so it's, it's a million dollar policy that you have to have for the day. Yes. So it's, it's a million dollar policy that you have to have for the day.
Okay.
So my question is, are you providing the licensed bartender, or are they finding a licensed bartender?
I, I will have a list of vendors that they can choose from.
Okay. And then you'll be checking those licenses as the event?
Yes, they, they have to be certified, yes.
And you'll have record of that and copies of that?
Yes.
Okay.
So the only thing you're providing is the space?
That's correct.
And whoever rents the event space has to provide the food?
Correct.
The insurance, they have to contract with the security?
Yes.
They have to contract with the bartender?
Absolutely.
Okay, got it.
How does it work then, though? We're granting you the liquor license. We're not granting it to somebody else. Does that seem weird?
Considering we do background checks on everybody that gets a liquor license?
Yeah, it's a little different than I think the other past proposals that we've had, where it's just was, you know, a restaurant where they had their own staff that was supplying onsite. So I do think we'd have to research the logistics of that a little bit more, if that is what the concept is.
Yeah. And so, and just so I understand, if you, if, let's say you open up, and if you're having a private event, this wouldn't apply?
That is correct.
Right. This is only in the, in the case that I wanted to rent it to have a public event at your space?
Yes. So if I'm having a public event where I'm selling tickets or something like that, then yes, now I need to look further into this license.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, well, now I'm confused.
Yeah, so on a given Saturday, Trustee Spurling wants to have some people there, have some friends over for like a dinner party, and she doesn't want to have them at her house. She can bring alcohol in and serve it?
That's a private event, so it's not required to, by law, for her to have to have an actual liquor license.
So somebody can have their wedding there?
Yep.
Not have to have a licensed bartender and not have to have an insurance policy?
Well, I, as the owner, am requiring this.
Okay.
Because I don't want any liability. So that's why I want to make sure that I have all of my i's dotted and all of my t's crossed, so that I can make sure that everybody is safe, everything is legal, and there is no, you know, getting around anything. But in, in the state of Illinois, private parties do not have to have a liquor license.
But you're requiring it?
I am requiring it.
So even on a private event, they need to have?
A licensed bartender?
A licensed bartender and the policy?
Correct.
And things. Because you can see the concern, that, you know, something could go south pretty quick, you know, something could go bad, and we wouldn't know, because we've already granted you the permission. So that's why we're concerned in asking so many questions.
That was my question too. So do we require part of the liquor license, then that she has to provide that information to us for each party?
I was going to say, if the board wants to create this classification of license, you could add those criteria that you wish, you know, and say it had to be by somebody who's certified regardless. You can create those, you know, because it's your classification that you're establishing.
And that would be in the liquor license. If somebody balked at you, you could say, hey, that's the village's requirement. I'm just doing what the village tells me I have to do. Yeah.
And we don't have any sort of event license like this, or any?
No, I mean, we have our temporary liquor license that you can get for events. That's, you know, very specifically for kind of nonprofit?
Sure.
Corporations. And then we have our catering license, which is still just a little, a little bit different than, that's for somebody who is going to be catering, going to places and providing, providing liquor with their services. So.
Ms. Perham, so tell me if, obviously, this is a new thing for us to discuss, right? We'd have to do some research in creating this. Are you in a position now where you've signed the lease and you're going into this?
Yes.
Or, so you're ready, ready to roll? And if you don't get the license, you're still going to be able to have a business, because you're going to have event space. You just can't have people having the liquor there.
No, they're going to have liquor, just not public.
Just not ticketed.
Publicly opened.
Right.
So you could have a?
This is just, this seems weird. This is a weird concept for me to do.
Can I give you an example real quick? So like, think of the, can you think of the Chamber Annual Dinner? So that is something they sell tickets for, for you to go to. So if they were to lease this space and they're selling tickets for you to be able to attend the event where there will be liquor?
Okay.
That is required to have a liquor license. Whereas if you are just having a private party, a retirement party, no tickets are sold, technically, the event holder does not have to have a liquor license. So that's kind of that, that difference in that you're having an event where you're selling admission to, essentially.
Okay.
That clicks in something different with the state regulations.
I think the reason why it's a little bit difficult to, to think through is that we do background checks on the applicant, and you'd be the applicant, you'd, you'd be issued the liquor license, and then unbeknownst to us, there'd be parties there that you would not be overseeing or have the insurance, the dram shop insurance for, where some other outside entity that we have no control or even knowledge of is, has the liability for serving and, and that. So it's, it's new for us. I'd like to have our attorney do some research on, you know, the state law. Maybe staff can look at other municipalities and kind of what they do for, I know that there's in Oswego and, and areas that they have a lot of facilities that do weddings and that kind of thing, just to kind of see what the standard is in the area, because it's new to us.
But I would also like to ask, chief, any, any concerns at this point?
Well, as far as the village, of course, we don't have the empirical data, because we don't have a BYOB addendum. So I did make contact with my associates in Aurora, St. Charles. They all stipulate those requirements in their liquor license, and it's a BYOB addendum. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I was just, just do a little research, and it's easily passed.
Okay, thank you.
Can you tell us what people are saying beer and wine, what, what type of alcohol would you like to serve at your events?
Well, seeing that I'm not a drinker, I, I couldn't tell you like, like what people drink or anything like that. So like I said, I, I just want to be safe in every, every area. So if someone is having an event and they are asking me for wine, or, I mean, of course, if someone's having a party, you know they want a toast. So if they want to have wine or beer or something like that. So I honestly can't tell you anything about hard liquors, because again, I'm not a drinker, so.
I, I drink very little. But if, if someone's going to a retirement party, maybe they want a gin and tonic or something of, of that sort, where if it's just beer and, and wine, then gin is out, right? So I'm, I like what President Brawley has said. I like what the chief has said. I think this is very doable. I just think that we need to study this a little bit in the meantime.
But the, the type of product that it's not really up to her to determine what it is, because it's myself as the renter renting the space, to determine if I'm going to bring in, you know, shelf liquor along with beer or wine?
But?
And have the bartender serve it?
And, and, you know, to clarify?
Okay, okay.
Because I spent 16 years as a bartender. If it's a private party, it doesn't matter, because she doesn't need a BYOB liquor license for a private party. It's only if whoever's renting the venue is selling tickets to attend the venue. And granted, you pay to go to a wedding typically, but it's not a ticket for entry.
Right.
So if it's a private party, there is no liquor license required. Now, it sounds like through this process, we might be able to put some stipulations into require exactly the things that you want, which will help you probably, like someone mentioned, because now it becomes a village requirement, so you're not the bad guy. We are, and we can give you Teresa's phone number. She handles all the complaints.
And I'll say, yeah, I'm confused.
So, again, I, I don't think that we, our stipulation of saying beer and wine only type of thing really only impacts those events that would be selling tickets for. Other than that, and it seems a little disingenuous to say, well, you can have them if it's a private party, but if you're having a ticketed event, you can only do beer and wine. So I think it's either kind of an all, all or nothing type of a deal. Otherwise, we're kind of splitting hairs on something that really, they have the ability to do without coming to us at all.
And I do want to research the private party aspect a little bit more, because the way the ordinance reads, which could be outdated from state statute, but it does reference the exclusion being just for being on the possessor's own property. So if you're having a private party at your house, for example, versus, I don't know that a commercial venue, it may or may not fall under that, but that's not how our ordinance currently reads. So I would want to reconcile that as well.
And I, I think just the biggest concern though is, you know, having a bunch of drunk people get out of hand. You know, we certainly, we don't want to see that. And obviously, you don't either, but I think that's probably my biggest concern with having, we don't know what's going in there, how much people are drinking, and that's, that's a big concern.
All right. Staff will look into it, and then either they'll report back or invite you to come back, and we can talk some more if we need more information.
Okay, thank you.
What's your timeline for opening?
Well, I'm shooting for the end of April, May at the latest.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for choosing Montgomery.
Yes, it was, it was very easy. When I came down, the people here were just so nice and everything. So it was really an easy process. So I'm glad to be here.
Thank you. All right, rolling into our second liquor license request is for Eleven Entertainment at 1575 Douglas Road. Director Abt?
Yes, so they are looking for consideration of a liquor license or liquor licenses, depending, for their new concept, which is a restaurant with a wine and whiskey bar. They are looking at providing food, as well as smaller tastings, onsite consumption, as well as packaged top shelf liquor and wine sales. And there would also be a gaming component with the packaged liquor sales, as well as the online consum-, not online, onsite consumption. That would require two separate liquor licenses. So like our Class G would allow for the onsite consumption as part of a restaurant. And if the tastings are not free, they would be, they could be lumped into that liquor license. However, if the tastings are offered for free, then we would have to look at creating a new license class to allow for that type of tasting situation. And then obviously, our Class C is our packaged liquor sales at a, not gas station, in town. So that would be another liquor license that would be required for this type of proposal. So we do have the petitioner here to answer any questions that you have, and I believe they have a color, a couple other representatives to speak.
Welcome.
Good evening. I've really enjoyed getting to know Montgomery in, in this process, so thank you all for that. My name is Erin Gallagher. I'm here representing the owner and the manager of, of this business, and I'm standing here with the broker. We were expecting the landlord, they were committed to coming today, but at the last minute, they had a, a family emergency. So we just got word. So our apologies for that. I believe you have the information that we presented. It's a, a menu, a full menu, along with the proposal. We have been, I think, Sonia, the first time you and I spoke was a year ago, maybe. We've been looking for locations here. We definitely have been very interested in this community. These gentlemen have had very successful businesses and a, and a kind of a wide variety of spectrum, based on the community that we're going into. This would be a full restaurant with a full menu. It would have liquor license and, and we've had a lot of success with high-end wines and high-end whiskeys. And so that's kind of been very successful in several of the other communities that we've, that we've been working with. And then determining whether or not we would want to do packaged liquor for sales. We have that in one of our locations where they sell bottles of wine just outright. That would be a component, if, if that makes sense in this community. We have tailored some of our business models to the different communities that we've been in, and the gentlemen here have had solid track records in many communities. We can talk to the mayors of New Lenox, Manhattan, Crest Hill, who have all told me that they would be willing to, to give good references. We have successful businesses in terms of, we, we've not had police problems, we've not had crime problems. So the police chiefs too can, could say that you're not going to get, I was listening to your comments earlier on, on the, the last folks who were speaking here, and obviously, you have concerns about, about the safety and security of liquor. We take that very, very seriously. And so a lot of these things that you're addressing, we've had experience with in the past and, and have a proven track record. We are asking for a gaming component. That's not going to be our first foot forward, so to speak. That would be in the back of the facility. And it would be a very high-end presentation. The other, the other locations, we've had beautiful wine bars created, very attractive lighting. As a, as a female, I, I feel safe going into these locations after dark. It would be a 21 and over crowd, and that's just a, a piece of the security and safety of what we're doing, especially if you're having a high-end whiskey. A lot of the gentlemen don't want, who are drinking this kind of drink, don't want little kids running around. It's just, it's a relaxation piece to it. It's, and we find that it, it's a business model that works very well. I've been told, or I've come to understand that you would be more inclined to approve this kind of business in the downtown area versus this location. And we have looked, we have looked and looked and looked. And as the last I, as of our last conversation, I don't know if this has changed, there weren't any other options available in, in the areas that were probably more desirable for your, you know, your, your preferences. But this location seems to be the right fit for us. And again, I walked that community and that neighborhood, and, and there are, I believe, four units open in that, in that facility. And, and this gentleman here is, represents the, the management. Thank you. And so he can speak to some of the economic impact of, of having that many open, you know, open spaces in that particular strip mall. I think it's an ideal place for that, because it's a very upscale, attractive business. I think it'll be a good anchor. Long-term, we've had long-term successes. We're not, a lot of restaurants are easy come and easy go. That's not who we are. We have had very successful track records for lengthy periods of time. And in fact, in New Lenox, the mayor and the board have, we're opening our third location in New Lenox with a discussion on possibly a fourth location in New Lenox. So they're, they're very happy to work with us. We've, we've, we've been a good business role model for, for others. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Couple of questions real quick. Are you looking, it says 1575, just the one?
Correct.
1,000 square foot building?
Correct.
With a full kitchen?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know?
Well, excuse me. I want to clarify full kitchen, because a lot of people don't have the terminology of this, the turbo chef.
Okay.
And that was in my proposal. So when you go to, when you go to Dunkin' Donuts and you order food, or you go to, Panera Bread has a turbo chef. It's about a $25,000 investment. It is a tremendous investment. It's not a glorified air fryer. It is not that. I have an air fryer. I cook. That's not what this is. This is definitely, it is definitely a very expensive piece of equipment, and we're choosing this because one of our, one of our threats, when we did the SWOT analysis, strength, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, one of the threats is staffing. Finding people to work ain't easy. And so it's getting a little better the further away from the, from the pandemic, but it's still very difficult to find people to work. And so having a turbo chef allows us to kind of predict that challenge, that threat. So we are, we are working around that. So it's, it's not going to be, and, and I don't understand all of the, the technical requirements, but it's not going to need all the exact ventilation and things of that nature. But yes, a full kitchen, by what we are used to, yes. But it, it might not be exactly what you'll see in an older restaurant, per se.
Got it. Do you know about how many, like, how much seating will there be? Because I'm assuming there's an actual bar?
Sure.
And then how much seating? Because you also have the gaming in there as well?
Sure, sure. I, we don't have a, a seating plan, per se. We have been looking at a couple of different options with both high tops and four top tables that are lower squared. So it's going to be somewhat, I mean, obviously, as a full restaurant, we're going to want to have enough seating to accommodate a, a fairly large group of people. to accommodate a, a fairly large group of people. But I don't have exact numbers for you based on the layouts because we've looked at a couple of different things.
Got it, okay. What is the name of some of the facilities in New Lenox?
In New Lenox, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank, and these are my babies, so I've been working on. Yes, Bluestone Commons has, there's ZIN, there's Vino. And there, a new one is opening up in, by the BW3s on Nelson, Nelson Road. We're actually taking, I think we're taking possession this week.
Got it. And the first one you said was ZIN?
Z-I-N. Yes. And there was, like I said, there's slightly different business concepts. So ZIN was the first, and we started with more of a retail piece. So we, we were heavy, heavy bottles of wine, heavy baskets, gifts. When you walk in, there's a whole wall of gifts and things to purchase, bags, baskets. And so we had a lot of sommelier tastings there. We had a lot of, of wine memberships, club memberships to that. But then we had COVID hit, and so that changed a lot of the, the dynamic of people stopping in there. Instead of buying flowers and wine, they'd stop in there and they'd get a bottle of wine and a bottle of chocolates and have a, have a glass of whiskey on their way home. So, so that's a, that's a different concept than the Vino. Vino is definitely, it's very small, but it's very high-end wine. Again, a lot of, a lot of displays of wines. That's at the Walmart Shopping Center on Route 30. And then the third one is, is opening up, like I said, on Nelson Road.
Got it.
So how many total other locations?
So there are, let me explain, this is a slightly different combination of owners. So the owners of these are cousins, okay? And so one of the cousins is coming out and partnering with his high school best friend. Or they're childhood friends, I'm sorry, they grew up together, and so they're partnering together. And the, the other owner is, has had a business in Oak Park. A, a different business, not a food industry business, but a service industry business. And in fact, he was honored and recognized by the Health Department in Oak Park. They came out and did a YouTube video in his business on how to properly clean your business. Because he was, he's very particular about cleanliness and, and safety. And so he, the Health Department chose his business, and he's been there 10 years and works with a lot of firefighters, with a lot of police officers. And he could easily provide plenty of references from that arena as well. And that particular gentleman grew up in the restaurant business. His family owned a coffee shop. Prior to him moving to Illinois, it was kind of an elaborate Starbucks, and he was management all through college. And so that's been, you know, his interest in getting back into the food business.
So.
So I, and, and this was all meant to answer your question, how many locations? Together, these two as a unit, none together.
Okay.
One of them has, they have a combination of liquor stores with no gaming. They have full restaurants, they have wine bars, so three in New Lenox. Two, three in Manhattan, two of them are gaming bistros, but that was what Manhattan requested. And a liquor store with no gaming. Crest Hill has a bistro, a gaming bistro because the mayor said they didn't want any more taverns competing with their existing taverns, and if you've been to Crest Hill, there are a lot of them there. There are a lot of Uker Halls in Crest Hill. And so they didn't want any competition to their restaurants, but they wanted the gaming revenue. So Crest Hill said, we'll give you a license, but only for gaming, only liquor and gaming. So that's why that bistro was there. And the other partner has some other liquor stores as well that he, with his family, but he's not a part of this venture. The other gentleman that I mentioned out of Oak Park, he has a very strong upscale business in Oak Park. He's looking to have a second location closer to his home, so we're in the process of potentially buying a building there. But again, it's, it's just a different combination. I hope I'm answering your question.
Yes, you are.
Okay, all right.
So here's what, here's what I would like to share with you.
Sure.
So I'm very protective over this Douglas Road corridor. I'm usually the one who's like the big, heavy-handed no.
Okay.
I do like, the, the concept is a little different than what we've had presented to us. But my concerns still, I, I have some pretty strong concerns there. To me, this is really reading as a tavern. You have the bar there for the tastings, which I understand that part, but now you're talking about a 21 and over crowd.
Right.
We typically, and again, I'm not speaking for the board, but in the past, what we have typically approved is something where you have 50%, 50% or more from your food.
51% was what I thought it was for the G license?
Yes, so that's typically what we like to see. I, what I'm reading here is this is really more tavern. The other piece that concerns me and really kind of leans toward that is when I look at the menu and you're saying it's a full menu, to me, that's bar food. That's not necessarily, you know, what you think of, what I think of for a restaurant, a restaurant menu. This is bar food. We're going to have the bar there. We're not allowing anyone under 21. It reads tavern or bar, and that's not what I'm interested in.
So what, what would, what would that look like for you? For it to be a full restaurant than not a tavern or bar?
I would like to see.
We're, we're in the bar business, so we, I, I'm not going to hide that either.
Right.
I mean, but we seem to have a good business model with this high-end wine and high-end whiskey. And, and we don't want to lose track of that just to, to, to open a restaurant. That seems to be part of the personality and the culture that works. It's working on an economic level, and it's been very successful. So what we are, we, we have found that by adding food to this, it, it helps the revenues all the way across the board. So we're seeing that and we're slowly implementing that in our other locations as well. But I, I don't know, I, I don't want to suggest that, that we're going to try to make it a restaurant when, when really, I mean, it's going to be a restaurant, but the personality is going to be just as you described. It's going to have, it's going to have that high-end feel, and I think that that, that corridor there could, could use an anchor of that nature.
And it is, it is something different than what has been presented in the past.
Sure.
And what we're seeing, obviously, you know from doing your research, you know, once we grant a liquor license, we have no control of the gaming coming in because we're non-home rule.
Sure, and we're not, we're not hiding that either. We want, we want full transparency.
That was in yours.
And that's my role actually, as is the person here. I'm trying to find what makes sense for each community. I couldn't believe that Crest Hill said to me, hey, we don't want you to have any food.
Yeah, to me, that's.
Right, but, but that's, but that was their reel. And so what we're trying to do is find, you know, if, if the sommelier tastings are, are a hang-up and, and don't seem to be, you know, fit into the classifications of, of the, the liquor licenses, that's not a deal breaker for us.
Okay.
Okay, those are, some of the, some of the small pieces, selling wine by the bottle doesn't have to be a part of this if that's not the right fit. Like if, for example, if you had another high-end wine store across the street, we might, we might lean a little heavier on some of the whiskeys as opposed to the wines. It just, you know, and, and in this new location that's opening up in, in New Lenox, for example, we're with BW3s, or I'm sorry, that's an Ohio thing. Buffalo Wild Wings here is what we know it as, and, and they're, you know, so we have no chicken. We have no wings on our menus, right? Because we're, we're working with them in that location. So that's why we're here asking for your comments and feedback so that we can put together the right business model. We know what works for us, but there's plenty of room for tweaking.
So those are my, my two concerns, and I appreciate the fact that you talked a little bit about the turbo chef because I saw that and I thought, oh, they're just reheating food. No, but I appreciate that it is, it is a, a significant piece of equipment they're going to have to put in there.
It is, it is a significant piece of equipment, and I was standing there waiting for my order at Panera Bread, and I'm sitting there with my little buzzer, looking at it, and there's the turbo shaft right in front of me. And I saw the sign and I'm like, I'll be darned, you know, I mean, they're everywhere. But they're such a huge investment that some of these bigger chains really are the ones that are, are, are using them first, and we're finding that they do work in, in the smaller individually-owned places as well, yeah.
You had, oh, go ahead, you had mentioned, I don't know if this is working properly tonight. You had mentioned that you were talking about four top tables. And is it, the, the layout of this facility, is it going to have, are you going to have a bar and tables?
Sure.
Or what's it going to be?
Sure, I, I believe I sent, did I send, send a, a layout plan with the bar along the side? I may have, but it doesn't.
We don't have it if you did, we don't have it.
Okay, I'm, I'm more than happy to send that to you. We do have some, some drawings based on other locations of similar size and shape. But basically, the bar along the right-hand side, gaming would be in the very, very back, and then the whole front area would be tables, seating. But it's, we're kind of looking at some cool tables, and so we're all arguing over which ones we want. That's what's happening.
What?
So whether they're short or tall or.
What would be the approximate square footage of the seating area as opposed to the service area?
I, I think you might know the square footage, but basically, the, I can tell you proportionally, the majority of the space is going to be seating area. There will be a long bar, but it'll be along the one side, the kitchen, and then the gaming. So call it, the bar, the kitchen, and the gaming would be kind of L-shaped, and so the majority of the space in the front would all be tables.
And there is a bartender behind the bar?
Yes.
Or a server or some, some sort of thing?
Yes.
And I'm from Ohio, I understand what the.
BW3s, yeah.
I understand what the last W means.
I'm sorry, I, I have a question because I'm, now that we've gotten some other additional information, so thank you. When I look up ZIN, and I apologize for using my phone, but I want to.
No, please, yeah.
Timely conversation, intelligent decisions. ZIN and Vino both clearly are casinos. It actually says it on the sign. They actually say it.
On the sign? On what, on what sign? I was in charge of ordering signs, so.
One of the signs says casino on it, and the other one says gaming. Or, I'm sorry, that's the way they come up when you look them up. They come up as gaming and casino. So is this a gaming parlor or is this a restaurant?
Please keep in mind, we've had different business models. I'm not sure what you're looking at or who was responsible for that. I can tell you that I personally was involved with ordering the signs for both, for, for ZIN, and I approved the sign for Vino, and neither one of them have gaming anywhere. Now, I can tell you that the state, if I understand this correctly, the gaming requires like a, a sign in the window that says that they have gaming available. But that is, whatever, whatever that law is for everybody, we will, we will comply to that. I can tell you that we had tried doing, I didn't try doing. One of the gentlemen was involved with putting on Facebook pages, but nobody updated it. So the gaming, the gaming provider was posting on the Facebook page, and they were the only ones posting, so we cut that off because it made it look like it was gaming. But if you walk into any of those businesses, and I believe I sent photos, they're beautiful and their bars. So I, I hope that answers your question. I'm, I, I can't be, I can't be responsible for what's coming up because I don't know what it is.
Bluestone Commons is located in what village?
New Lenox. Bluestone Commons is in New Lenox. It's on the far east side of New Lenox on Route 30, so there's a Target, a Lowe's, and then there's another strip mall behind that's called Bluestone. It used to have a Bluestone Tavern and Pizza House in that corner. That was kind of one of the, the anchor stores, but they have since closed, I believe just this year, may, may have been last quarter.
So one thing that I think would be helpful, and I think you, you said you maybe have submitted this, is this 1575 unit, if you could show us kind of what that looks like, you know, what you're thinking anyway of. I appreciate all the information in the background. This is probably more thorough than we get sometimes.
Oh, good.
Just to, just to convey kind of your, I get, you gave some examples of things that you've done, and I, I work in tons of municipalities. I know that there are some out there that want only gaming. I just came across that in town, so I get that. Whereas you can tell, way more hesitant in lots of gaming parlors in town. We understand that restaurants get them. So that's, that's the line of questioning there, but.
Sure.
If you can give us kind of what you're thinking, what your concept is here, and then if there's an example that you guys or the family currently operates that's most similar, that maybe we could get some pictures of, or we could go look at. That would be helpful for next time.
Sure, we have, we have two locations opening that would be very similar, but they're not, like I said, we're taking possession of one and we're struggling with license contractors with another, so.
Okay, I get it.
But I'm more than happy to provide you with what we have, and I, I thought I had sent photos and a, and a drawing, and I apologize, Sonya, if I, if I didn't. I can get those to you right away. But it would be, as I say, the, the front window is going to be critical to have seats, tables and chairs. They're not going to be booths, they're going to be more elegant. We're going to have a combination of high tops. And typically, a four-person high top is what we would be looking at, rounds, but also low table seating up front, so when people come in. I like to have the high tops in the window when you walk in because I like to have a glass of wine. I sit in the window and I stare at people, and I do my work, or I do whatever, have a conversation with my husband, or whatever it is. So we're, we're just kind of having fun configuring that.
Yes.
But I'm more than happy to provide you with whatever you need.
Okay.
What, what is the difference? I, I hear tastings of alcohol, purchasing of alcohol, restaurant. Where, how is this license different, or where, where is the, the line between this license and the Cooper's Hawk license? Because just on different kind of levels of aesthetics and what we're offering here, that sounds very similar business model.
Class T specifically says there will be no, no video gaming.
It's the gaming piece, okay. And you've said multiple times, high-end wine, high-end whiskey, and you got a hamburger cheaper than Red Robin. So I, I mean, no, pare this up because I don't, I don't expect to go in and have a nice glass of wine and order mozzarella sticks. So it doesn't match up for me.
Yeah.
The food and what you're selling with high-end.
High-end.
I mean, you have, you're talking high-end product and eh, food.
Right.
I know you said you were in the bar, you're a bar business, not restaurant, but it doesn't, it doesn't kind of match.
I grew up in the restaurant industry, so I, this is not my ownership, but I understand what you're saying. Believe it or not, it's what we're finding is working. Now, I will, I will give you the caveat, however, the caveat is that the menu is subject to change, and it depends on a lot of different things, including sourcing materials at the time we open. It also is subject to change if there is another restaurant very close that, that would like, you know, we don't want to compete our, our wings with their wings, for example. So, so some of that is, is variable. But we're finding that if a man wants to come in and have an individual pour of Johnny Walker Blue or Buffalo Trace and not buy the whole bottle, but just have a glass, they want a burger to go with it. And, you know, it's, it's not that we, we can't do a steak, but that's, that's a different level. And, and, and we're just finding that this is, you know, this is kind of easier and faster, and people will come and eat that and stay.
So is it going to be a full bar?
I think we've had, we've had, in, in the ZIN location, for example, we had primarily wine and beer, and people came in and asked for, for, I think it was vodka, some different vodkas, so we'll get a Tito's or something else there. Is it going to be like the bars in Manhattan where I'm from? No. I'm making a joke because my. I'm making a joke because my family was in the bar, my husband's family was in the bar business. If anybody knows Gallagher's in Manhattan, well, it's, it's a whole different story, a whole different level. I'm making a, I'm making a side comment that probably isn't, you, you don't know the, the reference to the joke, but it's-
I get it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Okay. Any other questions?
So I've been to high-end tastings.
Yeah.
And they usually have high-end pairings that go, go along with them.
When we do a sommelier tasting, we have what we've done in the past, which was always a lot of fun and drew a crowd. We would, we would have the sommelier pick, I think, four or five wines. We would have a menu for that tasting, and we would have, we would have specific cheeses. We would have specific chocolates. We would have specific nuts and things of that nature to pair when we do the sommelier tastings. In that event, we charged people a flat fee for the flight of wines, the tastings that they got, and the food came with it. And if they bought a minimum in wine, we would waive their tasting fee. So it-
My question is, how often is, are the tastings going to be happening?
You know what? I don't have a plan for that just yet. We were doing them once a month at, at, at Vino, I'm sorry, at ZIN, and it was going very well. And then I, I think it was COVID that changed everything, and, and we were doing them intermittently since then. But yes, I, I agree. When we do tastings, we all, we have high-end pairings with the tastings. And, and we're also doing, we're lining up a series of cocktails. We have a, a favored sommelier that we have just really worked well with in all these different businesses, and he's, he's been partnering with us with food and wine pairings, but now he's doing more cocktails. And so we're in, rolling out a whole list of cocktails at the, I think, gin and other things that sound exciting, but I've never tried.
What is your, your timeframe? So let's say, well, I'm going to ask very similar to what I asked our previous folks there. Well, have you guys, have you guys signed on the dotted line? Are you ready before, you're waiting to hear if you get the license?
Well, we're waiting to hear your feedback, yes. We are, we have an arrangement with them that, that we are, and, and you might be able to explain this a little bit better than I can, but in essence, we're not going to pull the trigger until, until we know that we have the licenses arranged and that. But, but mostly, we want to partner with you. We don't want to get away with something. We want you to know what we're going to do. We want it to work with what your vision is for the future. And we're willing to make adjustments here and there. Our timeframe is next, you know, we're ready to go. I, we've been looking for places for a year, and we're finally trying to get, I believe you have a letter from this gentleman, from the, from the brokerage, and, and so we, we're trying to get this moving. But, but I would love any and all feedback from you, because I, ultimately, if there's anything that I can do that will help, you know, get a yes vote from you, and it doesn't change, you know, us making money too, obviously, let's, let's find out, let's find out together. So any other comments? I'd be happy to entertain any other questions.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I'll just go hit on this real quick. I think, I think you kind of hit that. Let's, if there's a way that your vision and our vision aligns.
Yeah.
Our vision for the community aligns, that's find a way to make this happen. And we're, the board has been very good about that in the past, you know, even changing ordinances to find a way to make something happen that meets with the vision of the community. I think right now, there's just lots of unknowns with exactly what it is that you're trying to do, because you're saying great things about what you've done and what you want to do.
Yes.
But when you start looking at the math of the thousand-square-foot facility, it feels like a gaming hall only. And if you've ever watched any of these meetings before, and as I'm sure staff has mentioned to you, the board has been very leery of those in, in the village as a whole, but also in the Douglas Road area. We get so, and you're not privy to this, we get so many requests for people trying to do either a packaged liquor license or, or gaming halls along that corridor all the time.
Sure.
And, and it just doesn't fit with the vision. We've been trying for 10 years to encourage family restaurants like the Los Comales that's on the end there.
Right.
To, to sell good food in our town, and if they happen to have a gaming component, then that's ancillary.
Right.
And I think folks in the community are accepting of that. But the gaming halls get so much pushback from, from folks in our whole region. It's, it's different, might be different from other communities that I have worked in. So I think, right now, the best thing that you can do is get us some more concrete information about what you, what the space might look like, photos of exactly the, the vision that you have for this, because like Trusty Spreling said, we issue a liquor license, you have the liquor license, and we get to make no more comments, you know, forevermore.
Well, I have always operated under the, you know, under, first of all, I, I, you, you've said a lot of really great things, and I'd like to briefly address a couple of them. First of all, I think it's really important that you all do your due diligence. I understand, and I've sat in many, 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 many village board meetings throughout my life, throughout my career. This is hard work. What you have to do and make it fair for everybody, there's no question. And that's, secondly, why we are trying to be as transparent as we are. And, and Sonya made it very clear to me, you wanted family restaurants. That's not who we are.
Right.
I'm not going to promise you we're going to have a family restaurant. That is not something that works for us. We are definitely alcohol, which is not, and, and gaming and food. We are all of that, and, and that doesn't seem to be, it's, it's not the right fit for us. So with full transparency, we want to tell you, we can bring a high-end demographic, a high-end business to this very needing location that has had multiple locations not present there. I mean, I think if, if, if he had 10 people chom, jumping down his throat trying to fill in, I could see it would be easy for you to send us packing. But you need something there. There are plenty of, there are plenty of holes that need to be filled. We believe we would be one of them. We would be, we would, we would help you with, you know, tax, taxation and revenue on that front, but also, we're going to be good community partners. We're going to be good citizens. We've got a proven track record. You could talk to a lot of the different mayors. You could talk to the police chiefs. We're here to partner with you, and we're not going to, we're not going to be gone next year. If we come in, we're going to do it. We're going to do it right, and we're going to be solid for a very long time.
Okay.
So other than the, the floor plan with the layout and some photos of other locations.
That's all we need.
Any other requests?
No, because I do have one more question.
Yes.
Do you know what the cheapest bottle of wine is that's sold?
It changes. It changes.
We arrange. I mean, do you sell a $10 bottle of wine?
Well, I don't do the wine ordering. I'm not, I'm not in the day-to-day, but I do a lot of wine drinking. And when I go there and I buy, when I get wine, typically about $19 is the cheapest retail price.
I mean, it makes a difference between the price of the alcohol that someone's going to be able to walk in and purchase and, and take out in my mind. So-
Right.
If you're talking, your average is going to be a $35, $40, $45 bottle of decent wine.
Yeah, I don't think that's the average. I mean, we're not competing with Bennys. We're, we're offering something convenient to have them come in, and if they can come in and buy a bottle of wine and have a glass while they're waiting, and a, and a sandwich, then, then that, that's a good business model for us. We've had some very, very good wines, and when I say very good, I'm thinking $60, $70, $80, $90 bottles. I think the average is probably in the $24 range. You asked me for the cheapest. I'm not sure. I don't think it went below 10. I'm thinking it probably, the, the cheapest was about 15.
Well, I like hearing where your average is.
Yeah, yes.
Stacking up.
Right, right. And I, I'm not unaccustomed to cheap wine. I'll tell you that right now. I drink a lot of wine, and cheap wine is fine by me, but that's not what this is.
I get it too. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying I want to pay $80 a bottle, but when we talk about-
Well, you can't price yourself out of the market.
But when you talk about the possible foot traffic that we're looking at there.
But we're also not selling bottles of Johnny Walker Blue either. So having that on, you know, Eagle Rare and, and Buffalo Trace and some of these other high-end whiskeys and Scotches, to be able to get it by an individual pour is rare in this industry. You can't walk into just any bar. I mean, most bars don't sell that because it's very high-end. So that's part of our niche, is being able to do that. And the environment creates more traffic than the menu. The environment, the lighting, the beautiful wood flooring, that's what really attracts people, and then having, having those options. Does that help? Anyone else?
Any other questions?
I have one more.
Yes, sir.
What hours of operation were you considering?
It would be open all day. I don't have the exact hours. I thought that that was in our proposal, but I, well, maybe it's not. It would be, typically, the other locations are, I believe, 9:00 or 9:30 open until last call, whatever the, the community allows for last call.
Got it.
And that varies by day and community.
Yeah. Okay.
I thank you for your time.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our last item for discussion is LRS contract extension discussion. Director Wolf?
Thank you. Thank you, President Brawley. So tonight, I'd like to take this time to discuss the Village Montgomery's Waste Collection Program and a proposal for a contract, possible contract extension to Lake Shore Recycling Systems, otherwise known as LRS. So just a little background, the village, current contract took effect August 1st of 2017 and will expire July 31st of 2024. Now, for reference, this contract was originally awarded to DC Trash. However, they, the contract, I'm sorry, however, they were acquired by LRS in November of 2017. Since that time, LRS has been providing quality service to the Village of Montgomery and its residents. Staff has been working over the last several months to identify the best next steps for the village's future waste collection program. We have researched and analyzed information from comparable communities, items such as contract terms and services, and competitiveness in the marketplace for these services to best determine the next steps. This research and analysis, along with the discussion tonight, will drive our, the, our future recommendation forward for a possible contract extension with LRS. So tonight, a couple of quick things we're going to touch on is the LRS team. We're going to cover the services overview, comparable community rates, pricing proposal, and then we'll have questions and answers. So moving along, you'll see on this slide several members of the LRS team. Most importantly, I would like to call out Kerry, Katie Neary. Katie is the Government Affairs and Municipal Manager. Many of you, I believe, are very familiar with Katie. She has a strong presence in our community events, has been at many of these events throughout time, and she is here tonight to answer questions at the end, should the village board have any. So services overview, first and foremost, I think the most obvious thing that people associate this contract and services with is our residential garbage and recycling. This is something that LRS has done a great job of. They currently serve roughly 6,200 homes within the Village of Montgomery, corporate limits. LRS utilizes carts for both garbage and recycling. These carts were originally issued to residents at the beginning of the contract in 2017. LRS has continued throughout the terms of the contract to replace and repair carts as needed, as residents call, for these services. Residents also have the ability to adjust their cart sizes based upon their needs throughout the year. An important item to highlight with this proposal for a contract extension would be to continue utilizing these carts by these, by the homeowners. As you may know, the process of changing contractors and doing a cart swap-out can be very invasive for a contractor as well as village staff, and can also provide frustration to residents throughout the process. So with the terms of an extension, all carts would remain the same, of course, unless someone wanted to make a substitution. Also incorporated in this service is the ability for residents to place one approved bulk item per week out with their carts on their scheduled day for pickup at no additional cost. They also have the ability to place organics, such as yard waste and food scraps, out for scheduled collection as well. That only consists during the period of April 1st through November 30th of each year. In the current contracts, residents have, in the current contracts, excuse me, residents have the ability to utilize this service at no additional cost and also unlimited quantity. That is an item that, in this proposal, we're going to cover a little bit further on here in detail, that is subject to change. Another item incorporated in this is the Christmas tree removal disposal recycling. That's offered in the month of January. It's free to residents who utilize real Christmas trees during the holiday seasons. So LRS also collects five days a week, which is a, a point that is, we would like to make. This allows for additional customer service, as if residents experience pickup issues, they're in town, they're able to adjust and come back in town. So that five days a week being in the Village of Montgomery is definitely a benefit to those residents and their customer service. Collection days do vary depending on the area that you live in, and we have the map available on the website for people to be able to view. And so those are some of the things that, that are going along with that level of service for the residential and recycling. Moving on to the next service, which is Village Facilities and Special Events. So LRS, LRS obviously provides garbage and recycling service to fill the needs of our three major facilities, which are Village Hall, the Police Department, and the Public Works Department. They also provide services for our special events, take place in various times and locations throughout the year. Some of the events include Montgomery Fest, Street Eats Festival, River Run, and the Halloween Safety Event. During these events, typically, LRS provides disposable garbage cans, can liners, roll-off dumpsters, portable restrooms, hand wash and hand sanitation stations, as well as in some applications, street sweeping. These services are a direct effect on the villages, village providing safe and successful events to our public. Another item that falls under this service is the bulk leaf collection. The, this is also something that is a huge benefit to residents. So LRS supplies the village with multiple trailers and dumpsters for removal of the leaves that are correct, collected by the village's Public Works Department curbside collection program in the fall of each year. And one thing to note, as we get further along, there are communities that do not provide these services to residents. So again, as we look at many of these things, and we'll get into this when we get into the cost comparison, there are certain items that don't reflect in all of the different contracts, so just something to mention. LRS has done a great job over the year of fulfilling the needs for this program. As the village continues to grow, so do our trees, and therefore, leaves continue to fall at a higher rate. So in the proposal, you'll also see that we incorporated an increase to the volume of leaf disposal from 1,200 to 2,500 cubic yards annually to accommodate that growth. So next, whoops, sorry. Next is going to be the electronic home recycling collection program. It's offered to residents for the most convenient, safe, affordable, and secure option to properly manage electric, electric waste, electronic waste, excuse me, without having them to take it to a disposal site. They can do all this right from their home. So LRS will collect up to seven items each collection period for the village residents. These collections are done quarterly. LRS has an online e-waste request web portal that provides user-friendly process, along with a list of items that can be disposed of for residents to choose from. After requests are submitted, LRS will contact residents to acknowledge the receipt of their request and answer any additional questions the residents may have regarding this collection. The process has evolved dramatically over the years. As some board members may be aware, we previously hosted village events, which took place at a certain day, at a certain time, and in many cases, made it very difficult for people to be able to maneuver these items, whether via transportation or being able to load them into vehicles and get them to those locations. Not to mention having conflicts on those days and not being able to bring those items to those locations in that event. So therefore, this- So therefore, this, the curbside collection or at-home collection service has been very popular and well-received by most residents, and something that will continue on, as you'll see here in the proposal. The next very similar item is going to be the household hazardous waste, which is conducted very similarly to the electronic waste as just described. Very much the same process with the web portal. Also allows for at-home pickup. Again, transporting any of these hazardous wastes sometimes can be troublesome for residents to have to gather those together and transport those to a site. So again, that's something that you'll see in this proposal. So comparable community rates. So this is a very kind of broken-down analysis here. But in front of you, in front of the board, at your work, at your places here, is a further breakdown that Finance has worked with, myself, on putting together. It really shows what our total overall comparable communities are here. So we chose three communities that we felt were comparable in this situation, one of which who has, currently has LRS as their contractor, and two who do not. So when you look at these proposals, there's a heavier breakdown here of all the specific services that each community has as part of their contract. And again, they're very unique. Some have sweeping, some have bulk collection, some don't. So there are a lot of variables that go in, go into all this. so the detailed breakdown provided for, that we gave to you guys, I'm sorry, excuse me. One of the highlights is that, one that I wanted to make was that Sugar Grove had a contract extension that was built into their original contract. So therefore, LRS is contractually bound to oblige by that contract extension. So when you look at some of those pricing, that is why Sugar Grove particularly has a little bit cheaper price than what you see proposed there up on the screen. With all, all of that into consideration, as we evaluate these other community rates, we feel that LRS's proposal that they've offered the Village of Montgomery is fair and competitive, and look forward to the possibility of moving forward with a recommended extension. So the pricing proposal. So this is, the pricing proposal for the village would be a term of seven years, which is what the existing contract was. So we would renew an additional seven. This has an annual increase of 4.7% on the base rate each year. Services in this proposal align with those of the original agreement with a few changes, as I mentioned earlier. One of those being the organic waste or yard waste and food scraps. So what we'd be looking for is moving to a sticker-based program for that. One caveat would be that there would be two weeks of free collection, and one in the spring and one in the fall, where it would be unlimited, like it is now throughout the duration of the year. The idea for this change in service is to work towards reducing the base price for other residents that do not utilize this service. However, residents, again, like I said, will have that, two weeks in each part of the year, to be able to put out that unlimited amount of waste, as they've done before. These weeks will be, will be able to be determined by village staff as it best suits the needs of the residents. So again, we want to call out that there is, at the bottom of this slide here and in your pack, you'll see that there are an alternate option, which would be to move forward with an existing contract that mirrors what we have now. So again, where that yard waste stays exactly the same. Same process for unlimited removal throughout the year from that April 1st through November 30th timeline. But again, you can see that it does drive the cost up for the base rate for those residents that are, again, not effectively using that service. Some additional changes too, as well, as I mentioned earlier, is the addition to the bulk leaf collection program from 1,200 to 2,500 cubic yards annually. And then we also added the ability for Public Works to haul direct to LRS's disposal locations in Elburn and West Chicago at a $60 per ton rate. We felt that that was something that, as we do projects throughout the village and/or have unique situations, it provides us with that ability to utilize that as well. So again, that's kind of the broad overview of the contract. Again, I believe that a, a lot of the village board is very vested in the contract. As we made this change in 2017, I know that it was a big decision at that time. I will tell you from a professional standpoint, and I, and I think I can speak for most of staff, we have had a tremendous relationship with LRS, their community service, our customer service, and their participation in our community events has been tremendous throughout the contract. So at this time, I would turn it over. If you have any questions for me or for Ms. Neary, we're happy to answer them.
I have one.
Thanks, Mark.
The electronic recycling. It says, and it's hard to read on this. I think it said seven units per quarter.
Correct.
So Katie, you're a rock star. You've helped me with my, when I had an electronic. Again, the level of service from your company is beyond approach. But I noticed that it says seven per quarter. But when I had requested mine, is this a change? Okay. Because I sent in for four, and they told me, no, I could only do two.
So I'm Katie Neary with LRS. I know I have to say that officially. Hello, everyone. It's great to see you all. So it's actually, it could be that it's two TVs or monitors, because we're only allowed, because of the program we operate under, to pick up, or to receive, I should say, from residents. You know, it could be two TVs or a TV and a monitor, and that's where the limit of two comes in. But I will say, we did originally have it, and maybe it was HHW we had limits on when we first rolled it out, just because it's a very expensive service to offer, but that's not what you're inquiring on, so.
So, so it is.
So we have increased that as well.
It is one monitor, one TV, that's it.
It's seven items total. And in that seven items of every collection, you can only put out either, you know, two TVs and computers, like a total of two. It could be any combination of that, if that makes sense. TVs and computer monitors are the costly items, and they take up a lot of space. So we limit those. So if you had seven TVs in a pickup, you, we would leave five behind, for example. That makes sense.
So that didn't change.
We wouldn't probably leave it behind, but, yes, right, correct.
So the last time when we worked on this contract, when we first signed with DC, one of the things that we talked about was having a discount for seniors. And I, I thought we had that in place, because that was a sticking point for several of us.
That's correct. So we still have the senior program. That stays existing. So the senior program does have a limit. I apologize, I think it's.
300.
It's a limit of 300. 300 accounts.
So that stayed baseline in the proposal for continued service.
Okay, thank you.
What, what do we do if there are more than 300 senior accounts? Do we just?
We currently have a waiting list. And as seniors move out, then we pull the next person on the waiting list. Last time I checked, we only had approximately 15 people on the waiting list.
Can we increase it to 315?
Yes. Thank you.
That solves that. And by the way, outstanding service.
Oh, thank you.
Every time they, they come through, outstanding.
Thank you.
Cannot say anything bad about the, great.
Yeah. You know, Montgomery's very fortunate. You've had the same, you know, I'm very protective of Montgomery. I grew up out here, so, you know, my aunt used to cut hair across the street, and I know Dan Dolan really well, so I did. And you've got Danny Boys here now, and I just have a lot of connections here. So I've protected, keeping the drivers here that were here, because they sometimes want to move around, and I'm like, no, sorry. So they actually love servicing Montgomery. It's been the same drivers pretty much from the get-go, so. It makes a difference.
Mark, my question for you. When we negotiated this, what was, seven years ago? However, long. We wanted to get away from the sticker program. The stickers were a pain in the ass, right? Going out to the grocery store or wherever you got to get them, it's a pain in the butt. Am I correct in thinking, or I saw where we have the option, it goes to, I think, 26?
Correct.
It, it, so, right now, I'm in a, I'm in a situation where I'm paying 1964 a month, and then if we don't do stickers, it immediately goes to 26?
Yes. Correct.
25%.
And also, part of that, if you recall, is when we went to full brush, we also cut back on the monthly brush pickup by Public Works. So in my mind, I would want to reinstate that, where we do monthly brush pickup. And part of that was because we didn't have the manpower or the equipment to service the village. Well, we have the manpower and the equipment now, so.
Have the equipment.
If people.
Go back to that.
If people, if, because, oh, I forgot a sticker. I got to go to the grocery store or wherever you get them, right? A lot of people don't put out anything that would ever require a sticker. So I, I see why, why are they paying the increased fee? There's got to be a compromise here between the 1964 and the 26.
So the, so one thing to highlight that I want to just point out is that the sticker would only be on the organic waste. So meaning yard waste or food scraps. So your brown bags that you put out. So if you do lawn clippings, or you're doing your leaves in the spring, or you're cutting down, you know, your, your rose bushes or whatever, and putting those things in, that's the only application that the sticker would, would represent. And so again, the justification that I think LRS had in their proposal was that there are a lot of people who are subsidizing those that use that program, because there's more that don't. So again, it's to bring that rate down per customer, and then utilize the stickers for those that want to utilize that particular service, because the tonnage that they see isn't, isn't high enough to constitute them subsidizing.
Do you know, like, what fraction of the households utilize the?
I don't see that number, Mayor Brody, but I do know that, you know, I mean, we see it in the beginning of the year and the end of the year when the leaves fall. And, and that's where, you know, I mean, I, I am with you in that, you know, I mean, most garbage companies don't even want to deal with stickers anymore. This was just the creative solution we came up with for what we feel will be probably, you know, less than what we're anticipating. So, because most of this, we're bulking into the, the leaf collection, that, you know, people get to put it out on their, that's kind of rare. And that's where, you know, so we're hoping to at least recover some of those costs. Because obviously, you know, we've, as a waste industry as a whole, as with many industries, significant headwinds in the last seven years, for sure, so.
Sure.
And another thing, I guess, to highlight, and I don't want to speak for Katie, but the other factor is that, again, as I pointed out, LRS is in town five days a week. So from that April 1st to that November 30th, that's five days a week that a yard waste truck, which is an individual separate truck from your recycling and your, your garbage, is making those rounds and not picking it up. So that's where that added cost comes in. So if we bring in the sticker program, where we're able to crop that down, obviously, they'll analyze based upon the need. But then they can put appropriate trucks on it, which may reduce the amount of labor and vehicles on the, on the road every day.
So now, your stickered yard waste will be put out on the day of your trash only.
Which is the same as.
Which it was, no.
Yep.
So how does it cut down on the truck? I'm, I'm not following the logic that whether I put a bag out there without a sticker, or I put one out there with a sticker.
Still driving around.
The truck still has to drive around and pick them up, right? I'm, I'm not following the logic of the savings or the additional costs there. It doesn't change. It's just whether or not we're all participating and paying for that and spreading it across everybody, or we're having to put stickers on now. And then the folks that don't put a sticker on, or the stickers fall off and blow away, because, let's face it, people are ignorant, they don't understand. And now, now that lawn bag is sitting out.